Good evening. It is 6:30. I am going to call this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board to order on January 4th, 2022. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I will turn to the first item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for New Year's bonfire at Weir River Farm to be held on January 9th, 2022 with a rain date of January 15th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I believe is Michael here?
I don't see him, Joe. Dave Jones and Steve Murphy are both here, who might have comments on this.
Are we expecting Mr. Snowdale?
I believe, I thought so. Yes, I'm expecting him to answer your question.
Okay, so where I'm going is we can, we can move this to a latter part of the meeting if we expect him to be here.
Here's Michelle, who might know for sure, but I was expecting him. Michelle is, Mr. Snowden, Snowdale, gonna be attending the meeting, do you know?
Yes, he's supposed to be.
That might be him there on the phone.
Can we find out who is on the phone?
Who has extension or phone number 9162?
Hey, this is Mike Snowdale with Stellwagen Beer Company.
Great. You're the person we're looking for. How are you?
Oh, awesome. I'm great. Thanks. How are you guys?
We are doing well, and we have before us a proposal for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license, which is reminiscent of other things we've seen from you very recently. So if you could explain your New Year's event to be held after New Year's on January 9th?
Yeah, for sure. For sure. So this is similar to an event that we did at Weir River in 20, January of 2020. So they, they are actually collecting Christmas trees. They're planning on having a bonfire up at the top of Turkey Hill, not in the exact same location where we did the sunset picnics, but just across the street where I think they have their greenhouse and there's a field there. I know that Dave already received a permit from the fire department for the, for the fire piece of it. I have very little to do with that, other than just knowing that, that it's underway. Where they're just to, similar to the sunset picnics, serve beer to their guests. So it is in a different location, but it is all enclosed in a similar setup to what we did over the summer. So we'll be there with our beer trailer doing beer pours. We'll have tip-certified pours and I think that's about it. Is there anything else that you need?
Is there any COVID-related protocols that you'd be following?
Stellwagen-wise, absolutely. I mean, we'll, we'll, you know, the same as what we're doing in the taproom. I mean, it is, it is outdoors. So as a, as a staff, we, we distance when we can. But otherwise, it's just, you know, business as usual for outdoor events for us.
Liz, any questions?
My only question was related to the, the bonfire. So if Chief Murphy has already signed off on this, then I'm comfortable with it.
Bill Ramsey.
I have no, I have no concerns about Mr. Snowdale's piece of it. Wanted to make sure fire and police were comfortable with it. I anticipate, it's, it seems to be, it's been well-populated, well-publicized on social media. I think a lot of people are gonna attend it. So I mean, if I could hear from Chief Murphy and Chief Jones about their, their thoughts on the event, that it'd be appreciated.
Yes. So I'll, I'll start with Chief Murphy.
Hi, good evening. Yes, we have issued a permit for this. The, it's, it's kind of interesting because I mentioned this to Tom earlier, that they're farm. So they fall under different regulations and stuff. So we did issue a burn permit for them to host the bonfire. And one of the requirements that we put on them, which they've agreed to, is that we will have a fire engine there as a detail with two firefighters, just in case it gets out of control or anything like that. So from the fire perspective, as you know, Mr. Snowden mentioned, they did this two years ago, and there were no issues with it. So we reissued the permit again.
Great. Chief Jones.
Good evening, Joe. Yeah, likewise, we don't have any concerns. We've been in contact with the organizers and they are going to have a police detail, just because of the number of people that are expected to attend the event.
Yes. Do any members of the public have questions about this application? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Happy to make the motion. Pull it up. I make a motion to approve the special one-day wine and malt beverages license, licenses to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for New Year's bonfire at Weir River Farm to be held on January 9th, 2022, with a rain date of January 15th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe? I. It is approved. And good luck, Mr. Snowdale.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year to you all.
Yep, and thanks for supporting this activity.
Our pleasure.
Next, we have the opportunity to consider some additional department budget requests for fiscal year 23. And we are going to start with community planning and Emily Wentworth.
Sorry, good evening. Hello.
Hi, Emily.
Hi, thank you for having me. So as you introduced me, Emily Wentworth, the Community Planning Director, representing the Community Planning Department Budget. This is the first time I'm presenting it, so, so bear with me. But if we go to the next slide, I'll just highlight some of the, the principal functions of the department. These primarily relate to support for the planning board's permitting roles. They fall into site plan review, special permit applications, subdivision applications, and approval-not-required plans, as well as scenic roads. The chart below, you can see, we tried to highlight a little bit of the uptick in permitting activity we've seen as COVID progressed. So 2020, it seems the number of applications was deflated a bit. The board has been quite busy reviewing applications over the course of 2020. The numbers you're viewing right now were as of November, when the, the presentation was submitted. So it's gone up just slightly from the numbers that you're seeing here. I think applications that, you know, the board and staff may highlight are the Amazon facility and the industrial park that is, you know, under construction presently. And then a number of site plan review applications, they've seen quite a bit of turnover in existing commercial space, but also quite a few either reconstruction or alteration of existing residential properties that exceed certain land disturbance thresholds and, and would require a review of the project. The way staff supports the planning board, we, and the town more broadly, we offer guidance to applicants at the pre-application stage, offer professional and administrative support to the board during its review, and then post-permit would conduct, you know, site inspections and ensure compliance with conditions of approval. The other principal function of the department is to do, you know, again, to support the planning board and the town in more long-range planning efforts. The most significant over this past year in particular was that the, the planning board voted to adopt the master plan in August. That's right now in its final formatting stages with the town's consultant. And we'd expect in the next few weeks to be, everybody will be able to actually see the complete document. In addition to that, there are certain other projects that we worked on this past year. One related to the harbor downtown and was supported through MAPC. The other was a rapid recovery planning effort intended to help businesses recover from impacts related to COVID. And then underway, we have the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we're working on with many other departments in town and a few zoning amendments that you'll hear more about as we get into town meeting review. So on the next slide, you'll just see the overall budget request. The most notable item on here is, as you're aware, town meeting last year did vote to support an additional staff person in the department. So we now have three full-time employees, which should increase our capacity to help advance certain goals of the town. Other than that, our expenses have remained flat for a number of years at approximately $24,000 for a grand total of just over $260,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Liz, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Emily. I don't have a question you need to answer right now, but I would love to, you know, understand kind of what adding that planner does in terms of the capacity. I think that's, that's really important for the public to understand how, how much you're accomplishing and, and how much more, you know, you're able to do. So that would just be, as a follow-up, I would love to have a better sense of that.
Yep. And I'm happy to follow up in greater detail, but you know, the high-level response is that the new senior planner will be focusing more on the permitting side of those functions, providing direct professional support to the board. And then the, the planning director position can focus more on the other side, the long-range planning, grants, opportunities, management of particular projects.
Right. Excellent. Thank you.
Bill.
Great. Can we go back one slide? All right. So first of all, Emily, congratulations on your new position. It's awesome to have you in there. And we're lucky as a town to have you kind of leading our planning department. So I'm thrilled to have, having worked with you for so many years, I'm thrilled to have you in there. So it's great. So the site plan reviewed from 20 to 21 almost doubled. I'm thinking that probably because the bylaw change we enacted at the end of 20 increased the threshold that made for, for the criteria to have site plan review. It made, it really required the planning board to do more work in terms of the site plan review. Is that why? Is that why?
Yeah, I, I think that's partially to explain, and I think we'd have to take this chart out a few more years to see if the, the fluctuation is unique to these two years, because the other potential explanation is that there was less commercial turnover during COVID. So it's probably twofold, but you're correct. The town recently lowered the disturbance levels for a site plan review application from overall 20,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. So, so we are seeing more of those residential applications at this point.
There was also a discussion when I left the board about administrative waivers that would allow staff to kind of waive some site plan review, to make it easier for applicants and to make it less burdensome on the board. Was that ever enacted?
Yeah, not yet, but thank you for asking that question, because there is a pending zoning article. The planning board initiated one this year to kind of do a wholesale revision of site plan review and, and potentially consider delegating certain changes to more of a staff level review and then setting up different thresholds for minor applications versus more significant or impactful applications. So the hearings actually just opened last night. I think there will be substantial discussion through the process. It's not clear what the final form will be at this point, but we're, we're hopeful that something will get to town meeting this year.
Great. Well, thanks, Emily.
Emily, I, I join Bill in welcoming you, welcoming you to your new position. I suspect the zoning board is not all that happy that you left, but I know we've got wonderful people there as well. I have two questions, and you can decide if you want to answer them at this stage or wait until the land use and development and address it, address them then. The first question is, what is your sense of how the town is doing in facilitating develop, development opportunities, getting reviewed, considered and acted upon by the various boards and committees? You know, we have heard in the past that because of the layers of, of review, some opportunities are stifled, people get frustrated, others are very happy the way it works. So this is something that, that is a long-term issue, but I want to get a sense from you today about how you think it's going. And my second question concerns the town's opportunities for growth. And what do you see as, as areas where we can be looking forward to new, new growth in terms of developments, in terms of, from the town's perspective, new tax revenue coming in? And those are broader questions. Again, if you want to defer until you've handled land use development, that's fine with me, or you can tackle them now.
Yeah, so I, I'll respond in the same way I responded to Liz. I will give you my, my initial response, and then potentially we can follow up with a more lengthy conversation later. But I, in terms of our permitting approach to development, I, I feel strongly that all members of the permitting departments are highly customer service oriented. So we feel that we're here to help, whether, you know, that's a developer or a homeowner, smaller business owner, and potentially a butters to any of those other parties' properties. So, you know, the, the second floor departments, as we refer to ourselves, we coordinate pretty well. We've got a track record doing that to ensure that we're all informed about which departments reviewing what. And, you know, as Bill mentioned, we're also looking to advance ways of making our permitting functions more efficient. In particular, this year through potential changes to the site plan review process that we have in place. And as we can talk a bit more about in the next department's presentation, through delegation of some of the zoning board's responsibilities to the position of the zoning administrator, so that those applications can be heard more quickly. Again, to improve efficiency. So I hope you're hearing positive feedback from the business community about the, the way permitting works in town in terms of bigger development opportunities, the one that, you know, we've all been focused on as a town, really over the last decade through certain actions taken at town meeting, and then through the South Hingham Study Group and a, a longer-term conversation we've been having with certain property owners. We're, we're looking to encourage development in South Hingham that would positively impact not just our tax base, but the, the community more broadly in terms of job opportunities and, and other supportive functions or uses.
Great. Arthur, is there anything that you wanted to add at this stage?
Joe, I think all I would say is that, just taking one step back, you know, we're, we're very close to having a, most of what you could call the second-floor team built out, different open slots related to permitting across the board are close to being filled, and that's going to allow us to do a lot more than I think we have in the recent past with regard to predictable permitting, which is your first question, but also making some, some progress, you know, around the, the different plans that we've adopted over time, not least of which is the, the master plan, which the planning board adopted earlier this year. I think it's an exciting opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with, with Emily and, and the rest of the team.
Great. Thank you. So I'm going to turn next to the land use development, and then after that, I'll open it up to public comments that Emily might want to address. So Emily, if you can now proceed with the land use and development department budget request.
Sure. So I, I am now representing the Land Use and Development Department as the former senior planner zoning administrator. This slide just talks about our broader mission, which, you know, primarily relates to four different topic areas. We've got land use regulation, affordable housing, economic development, and planning. So if you'll turn to the next slide, and I know you've heard me actually make this budget presentation before, I'll just quickly touch upon, you know, some of the highlights in each of those four areas from the last year. The land use regulations, the department provides staff support principally to the zoning board of appeals in this department. And so that includes similar items to staff in the community planning department in terms of pre-application support, professional and administrative support, and then post-permit functions. But on this side, it's primarily related to use and dimensional permits, either variances or special permits under the zoning bylaw, and then outside of the zoning bylaw, potentially comprehensive permits or mixed income permits, where the zoning board is acting not just under the zoning bylaw, but also as other boards, local boards under local regulations. We've seen a decreased number of variances, again, as well as comprehensive permit applications in, in recent years, which I've mentioned before. The department also staffs, to some extent, the Affordable Housing Trust. Some of the highlights here that we were redesignated this year as a housing choice community. The department managed and closed out a housing choice capital grant to rehabilitate a two-family home owned by the housing trust. And because the department was fully staffed for most of the year, we were able to resume some of their financial record-keeping responsibilities for the trust in their management of the properties that it owns. And in terms of economic development, because of some staffing vacancies and overlaps, this department also worked on the local rapid recovery planning grant effort. We, we, I mentioned earlier that the zoning administrator continues to hold hearings, so applications are disposed of within 35 days instead of 100 or 90, depending on the type of application heard by the zoning board. And then, you know, we also continue to work with other departments on the restaurant reopening group and, and trying to help those businesses to, you know, stay open during the COVID state of emergency. In terms of planning projects, this department tends to work more on discreet planning projects, not necessarily as long-range, as say, the, the master plan that's supported by the planning board. The highlight this year was that the housing plan was finalized. So that's available and online presently. On the next slide, we can, you'll just quickly see a chart about, you know, you'll see some of the fluctuation and the number of applications heard. And I apologize for the timing, because this was done in November. We didn't have a complete view of 2021. But you're likely to see something similar to the 2020 numbers. So overall, the trend is downwards. I, I think that's attributable to the fact that the board is enforcing the bylaw more strictly, so there's fewer variances granted, and as noted before, fewer comprehensive permit applications. That is primarily because the town continues to exceed the statutory minima on our subsidized housing inventory. So the state, it continues to certify that we exceed 10%. We're at 11.37%. On the next page, I don't, I'm, I won't expand on most of these items. I guess the, the most notable here, and everyone's kind of alluded to this, is that there's been some turnover and vacancies and staff support. But we're really excited to, and as I said, we attracted highly qualified administrative staff, who now has another opportunity in the community planning department. But then in terms of professional staff, there's a new senior planner zoning administrator that will be starting next week. So, you know, as Art mentioned, we, we're very close to having people in all the seats in, in, within these two departments. And then on the, the final slide, this is the overall request. Salary obviously makes up the majority of it. Expenses are relatively minimal. And, you know, largely related to things that were required to do, such as, you know, legal advertisements of public hearings. And that concludes this presentation.
Liz, do you have any questions?
Just one question, Emily. I know you mentioned in the budget documentation that you had done, is several activities electronically due to COVID. It was in, relative to the postage, which is not a huge number, but just wondering if there are other efficiencies or other things that you found that, that could be done electronically that, that you're going to use moving forward?
Yeah. So what you're mentioning is that because we're posting everything online now, there, there are less mailings that we have to do to board members. I think the, the additional benefit is that the information is available to the public more readily. And then if, and I apologize that I'm gonna be bouncing back and forth between these two departments, but we, we are accepting applications for both electronically. And then I'm maybe the only person really excited about this. Actually, I'm sure there's probably one other out there. But the zoning bylaw itself was just converted into a more professional document. So everything is hyperlinked to the table of contents. It's easier to navigate. The formatting's been cleaned up. So it's just, you know, well, it's a much more readable document, I think, even for the general public and not just those of us who work in this field now. And we'll continue to make those improvements.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Bill.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Emily. Two two questions here. We are above the forty B threshold of ten percent. Do you see the town staying there? Is there any activity that this that the select board should be looking at to make sure that we? Continue to maintain. Affordable housing over the ten percent threshold.
Yep, so the housing plan projects that will retain a buffer cushion of approximately thirty units. After release of the twenty twenty census data that is the, you know, serves as the denominator in that calculation. Right now, the census isn't expected to release that number until potentially the end of this this year, twenty twenty two. So for now, our number continues to be based on the twenty ten census figures. And and then the numerator is the number of units that that we have. The town through this board and and other agencies, you know, continues to fight to preserve every unit. That qualifies for inclusion. The housing trust working with this board just acquired. A unit at Ridgewood Crossing a month or so ago to ensure that it continues to qualify. On the subsidized housing inventory. And then in terms of the significance, we so. We tracked very closely the number of new legal units that are approved by the town, so we have a. We have a very good idea of the number of year round units that the census is likely to release and that's what that thirty unit. Buffer cushion was based on. If, you know, for some reason, the census found more units out there than we had permitted over the last decade. That that thirty unit cushion is pretty significant. They would have to find more than three hundred units. In order to to make it so we're underneath the ten percent.
It's the growth of that denominator that can really creep up on the town, so I'm glad, it really sounds like you're you're monitoring that, so so thank you. Next question. You pointed out that the restaurant opening group reopening. Has been making a lot of progress and I know you've been involved, you and I have both been involved in. In doing what we can to assist restaurants to staying open. There's a whole group that that's really supportive that. Are there any changes that you would suggest, and you need not answer this now, that you would suggest the town consider making permanent? For example, having more outdoor seating, which has been done on an interim basis. But things that we can be doing that will make it a more welcoming community. Not only for businesses, but for our residents, think changes, and in in many ways, it's picking up on Liz's point is that. Because of COVID, we there've been some procedural changes that we should be looking at making perhaps more permanent. Asking it more broadly in terms of policies, whether it's under zoning, planning. I'm not sure exactly where it falls, but things that that we should be looking, the town should be looking at to make more permanent.
Yeah, there so the state actually through that rapid recovery program issued a guidebook on how other communities. Approach outdoor table seating for restaurants. There are some that handle it more as. Almost like an event or, you know, a seasonal temporary use that doesn't necessarily require a use permit under zoning. And and that may function well through this board, similar to how it did during the state of emergency. Going forward, particularly if it's table seating on public property, so on a sidewalk or. You know, a little parklet or something along those lines. I think where it may become more complicated is where parking. Is displaced and we're right now anticipating that. When the outdoor table seating program ends in April, by then those restaurant owners will have had to have. Navigated our our standard. Zoning processes, so if that's an extension of the use because additional seats are being added. That's a visit to the zoning board, most likely, depending on the district. And then if if it's an expansion of the use that requires additional parking that isn't available on the site. That is a visit most likely to the planning board. It's been communicated to all the restaurant owners in town that, you know, the current allowances will expire in April. They've been encouraged to reach out to permitting staff so that. You know, they know what their step next steps are for the time being and then. We we should, we can look at revised policies going forward if if necessary.
Yep, I mean, you you've pointed out that there is a trade off. You have more outdoor seating. It it might take away from parking. It might create. Trash and other issues that the surrounding businesses have to deal with. So I appreciate your your navigating this. Challenging topic. Are there members of the public that have comments or questions concerning community planning and land use and development?
Joe, can I follow up?
Please, yes.
Yeah, Joe, you you make, Joe, thank you for bringing that up. You make a great point. I don't want to dive too much into that, but. So Emily, a lot of restaurant, several restaurant owners have asked me about the same. Question that Joe brought up, you know, when does this end? How do we extend it? And I so I won't dive too much into it tonight, but, you know, I've told them two things. April, it's going to end. Number one, number two, they need to contact you very quickly to get on. The zoning board, planning board's agenda to if they want to extend this. But is your office or is Art and Tom, have they reached out to those taking advantage of the? Of the governor's order and do they know that they need to proactively take steps to continue to do this through special permits?
Yeah, Art and I were actually talking about this earlier today. Sharon Perfetti had had noticed all the restaurant owners. Of the expiration date and what next steps were. It was a little bit ago, so we discussed sending out another notice, particularly since we're we're getting into. Bit of a time crunch between now and April, if they want to, you know, usually takes about two and a half months or so to get through those. Permitting processes, so what we can get on that this week.
Great, thank you for doing that. And and I would I would share Joe's. Sentiment to that if there are steps that this board can take to help. Continue to continue the process with these businesses, I certainly we would be, I would be interested in pursuing it all, so I think it's been a huge benefit to everybody, so thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Are there any other, are there any members of the public with comments or questions for Emily? Seeing none. Emily, one more thank you. Your efforts are just amazing and and we really appreciate everything you've done for the town.
Okay, have a good night.
We now turn to the building department and Michael Clancy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Clancy. I'm the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. I'm here to present the FY twenty three budget. The Building Inspection Services Department falls under the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. We enforce a series of fourteen international codes, including the state building code, residential. And commercial, the fire code, the existing building code, mechanical code. Swimming pool and spa code, energy conservation code, architectural access board for disabilities. Zoning Act, Chapter forty A, the the Hingham zoning by law, the general by law. The plumbing and gas code and the electrical code. The building officials are on call twenty four seven. We also work very closely with the police, fire and DPW when needed. Next slide, please. This is through October of this year, building permits. Fees collected in two thousand twenty one was one million, one, one hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred and fifty four dollars. Building sheet metal certificate of occupancies. Final cost affidavits certificate of use and occupancies were one million. Nine, nine thousand eight hundred ninety four dollars. Electrical plumbing and gas fees were one hundred and sixty five thousand, thirty dollars and fifty cents. We've issued a total of three thousand seven permits to date. Total inspections to date, building sheet metal, electrical, building, gas, zoning and complaints. Were four thousand seven hundred and fifty two. There is a graph down the bottom. Showing what we have done to date. Actually till October. Next slide. Building projects under construction and nearing completion. The Amazon distribution center is under construction at one hundred Industrial Park Road. Derby Street shops continue to renovate, including two new restaurants and a small addition. Planet Fitness is renovating their existing space. The Hingham Shipyard continues to renovate its existing spaces as well as the renovation of the DCR. Maintenance facility building. We have a large project going at one oh five North Street. With the demolition in building is starting the new the new foundation at this time. In a new residential and commercial building. Several homes, as I think everybody knows in town, have been demolished. And have been rebuilt over the past year. Next slide, please. The staffing for the building department salaries. Is two hundred and sixty two thousand, seven hundred and ninety one dollars. We have full, six full time personnel, one building commissioner, two administrative assistants. Three building officials. We have six part time. Personnel, six building officials. Expenses, they've been the same for the past, I think, three years of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty. The major items would be in-state travel, five thousand dollars. Inspections, far inspections. Twenty six seventy eight would be for fuel for the vehicles. We do have a new code cycle coming up. It's supposed to be here June first, so we will have to be buying new code books. At a estimated cost of twenty five hundred dollars. Also, the building revolving fund is credited with all plumbing, electrical and gas permit fees. And is used to pay the related inspectors. Next slide. Or is there one?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Is there any questions I can answer?
I'm sure there are. I'm going to start with Liz.
Thanks so much, Mike. Could you go, Michelle, could you go back a couple of slides? I just want, looking at that graph. Of that number of. Inspections, how does this compare to the previous year?
They're off around ten percent.
Okay, interesting. All right, thank you.
Mike, I'm not sure if I start. How many assistant inspectors do you have?
We, as far as full time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, both full time. Oh, yeah, it's it's six part time. I see it there. Okay, a couple of part, full time, got it. Mike, want to thank you for the great work you do. You do an excellent job and can't 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 say enough. Thanks to the great job you do for us, so thank you.
Well, I thank you for that, but I couldn't do it without the team I have. I have a great team in the office.
Mike, how are you?
Good, thank you. And you?
Good. I just got a couple of questions. I know you are. Responsible for, you know, you're you're the enforcement arm for the building code, the zoning by law, a lot. There's a, there's a lot that's on your plate and and you really do an excellent job. Thank you. One, one area that I know you've focused on is the Architectural Access Board for Disabilities. And I'm wondering to what extent you have been interacting with the Commission on Disabilities.
I'm actually on the commission. I was appointed to the commission and I started this. I think it was in October is when I started. I wasn't in the beginning, but. I feel that. It was a good appointment for me to be on that because. I didn't, even though I enforced the Architectural Access Board rules and regulations. I'm also seeing it now from a different perspective from other people that are on the board and things and something that. I might not have looked at the same way before as what I'm looking at now, so. I think I think it's a good fit for myself and the building department to be on that committee and team because. We are working out some. Some difficulties with some of the things that are happening in town and things and. And they were concerned about how things were getting done and why some of them weren't being. Brought up to code and. I'll just give you an example, if you have a. An existing building and the front door is thirty two inches wide and you have a step. To get down onto the sidewalk. If you replace the door, you'd have to put a thirty six inch door. To enter the the commercial building or or business, even though. The thirty six door is required for somebody in a wheelchair to get in the the building. But they do not have a ramp to get in to the building because they didn't replace the stairs. If they replaced the stairs. They would have to put a ramp in and then use the the door, so I did explain that to the to the committee and things and. So that's how there was a little bit of confusion in the beginning. Of course, the committee wants. Everything to be up to date on all the different businesses and businesses and things. And I think we're going to be working at a goal to do that, but it will take some time.
Thank you. And I I have a budget question. I I noticed that. Your budget seems to be flat, except. You've got basically a ten percent increase in clerical services, full time clerical services. I'm wondering why, why that is necessary.
We haven't got any, we have, everything's been the same. We didn't change the clerical.
So I'm looking at the number for fiscal year twenty two was fifty six thousand, six fourteen. For fiscal year twenty three, it's sixty two thousand, four sixty six, which is about a little more than ten percent increase.
I'm I'm sorry, that was when they had to study for the raises for everybody in the town. And that's what was brought up. As far as that was. The raises that were granted to the employees. But as far as the same administrative staff.
Right.
Will keep them the same.
Okay, great, thank you. Again, Arthur, anything that you wanted to add here?
Yes, thank you. I I just want to do a maybe highlight something that. Mike pointed to it in a basic way in his presentation, noting that his staff is available twenty four seven. You're just, I I just noticed that when we when we group our our budgets or departments into different categories, just to try to make sense of. The range of things that we do here. We put the building department in with the other public safety departments. I think that that it's important to recognize that that reflects the important role that Mike and his team play, not just in enforcing. The 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 various, the various codes that ensure safety, but they also get very involved as the situation requires. I mean, in the the major storm we had in October, his team was out about. All weekend looking at buildings, checking structural integrity, verifying the the quality of electrical connections. To ensure that, you know, homes had had heat and power. The team does a lot. They they make important contributions to to life safety and I think that's. And I think that's their effectiveness during that storm highlighted that. I just wanted to be sure that that was considered. Thank you.
Great point. Thank you. Any member of the, any member of the public have questions for Mike Clancy? Seeing none, Mike, good to see you again, and thank you for all you do for the town.
Thank you very much. Talk to you later.
Absolutely. We now move to the trustees of the Bathing Beach, and I believe we have Ed Johnson here. There you are.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing tonight?
Doing well. Please walk us through your your budget.
Okay, I'm here to present our huge budget this year. As you know, I think we're the second smallest budget in town, the last I heard. The vast majority of the budget is salaries, which is twenty-seven thousand three seventy-two for the head lifeguards and the online lifeguards. As you know, the last couple of years, it's been very difficult to maintain a full staff of lifeguards. It's not the glory job that used to be. And to get the certification, you have to have the certification. It costs three hundred and thirty dollars, which when I was a lifeguard, I believe was free. And you have to have your your lifeguard certificate, your first aid certificate also. And the problem that we have towards the end of the season, we have this all over, other beaches have this too. A lot of the students are going back mid-August, so we have to bring on some high school kids at that time who are new lifeguards at that time. So, it's a continuing problem just by the nature of the calendar of the year. And the net cost is billions in grounds, which is six thousand dollars. As you know, because of the way the water goes down the beach in the storms, a lot of that sand winds up at the at the boat ramp. And the DPW is continuing moving that sand back up to the beach. At some point, we're gonna have to bring in some additional sand there to cover the beach. We also have the votancy. We haven't opened up the old bathhouse the last couple of years because of COVID-nineteen problems. But at some point, we're gonna have to have some usage of the votancy in the old bathhouse. Only the lifeguards use that. We don't have the bathrooms open to the public. They have to use the the new bathhouse restrooms. The outdoor shower, which is a big point that we we have, is that one because that keeps the sand from the new bathhouses, people walking in with sand on their feet. So, that's a cost of about three, three hundred dollars per year. We have consoling supplies of about six hundred and fifty dollars, which is toilet paper, cleaning supplies, issues like items like that. And the uniform allowance is one thousand eight hundred and fifty. That's for the swimsuits, the t-shirts, sweatshirts and the hat. And that's pretty much our budget.
Great. So, Ed, I'm a former lifeguard and maybe I should be applying when.
Sure, we'd love to have you.
Need some assistance here. Liz, any any questions?
Just one question. Thank you so much, Ed, and thrilled to see the beach house open. It's such a nice addition down there. Does the FY twenty-three budget include operating the the old bathhouse, the bathrooms that you're referencing?
As of right, well, it could be according to the COVID-nineteen because they don't meet ADA compliance for the most part, the old bathhouse.
Okay.
So, and the new bathhouse is only open when the snack stands open. So, if we have to, we have gotten temporary bathrooms on the porta-potties. If we have to, we're bringing the porta-potties again.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Bill.
You know, Joe, I'm recused on this one, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. I see Mr. Peralta's on the line. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The other thing, just to bear in mind, the future, because of COVID, we have been unable to open the community room, which I think will be a good source of revenue in the future. So, I think in future years, we're optimistic that we may be able to generate some more money and at least have a stable or even a lower budget if, in fact, we can set up a mechanism where some of that money can offset some of these expenses. So, that's something I'll be working with with Michelle and Tom, or the board will, Michelle and Tom, trying to get that back up and going.
Great. I know, Ed, you mentioned the boat ramp. I believe the state is planning on doing work this spring on the boat ramp. And I'm wondering if you anticipate how that might be affecting or might affect the use of the beach?
Well, I think when the boat ramps stand over again, I think the parking lot at the boat ramp will be much busier than it is now. And some of that parking might wind up at up at the Bathing Beach bathhouse when when the boaters have their travels there. So, it's a possibility that could happen.
Yep.
I could touch on that too for a minute, Mr. Chairman. I, one thing with the new design, which Ken Corson's probably explained to you, the old one is rather rudimentary, but there is a Jersey barrier on the left-hand side that stops a lot of the sand from drifting there, which will not be part of the new design. So, I think we still will be realistically looking between DPW and whatever with maintenance of that new ramp, which will be into deeper water, which might allow the flow to be better. But I think realistically, we should, as a town, realize we'll still have ongoing need to. It's just the way it happens with storms. If we have a nor'easter, it drifts in that direction. You know, so it's probably gonna be, it, there's a chance it could be worse because the Jersey barrier won't be there. That makes it a little easier for DPW to go in because the sand pretty much stays there. It'll be interesting to see how it works. It's gonna be a great improvement, but I think we'll have some maintenance issues to deal with as a town.
Yes, I agree.
I think the only solution is having a jetty out there to to stop the water from moving to stand up, but that's very costly.
Are there any members of the public with questions for the trustees of the Bathing Beach? Seeing none. This board does thank the trustees for your diligence. The beach, while it's not a huge beach, is a huge part of the town. And it is something that town residents look forward to, and we do appreciate your efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we turn to Chief Murphy and the Fire Department.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. I'm happy to present the budget tonight. And with me, I also have deputies LeChance and Deputy Levinson. I also noticed that Captain Becker is on here, too. I think he's probably for a something that coming up later on in the agenda. So, to begin with, I'll try to be as brief as I can. This first slide, the Mission and Services. As you can imagine, this has been the same slide for the last few years. I haven't really changed it. For the most part, our mission and services don't necessarily change. What does change is the operational methods that we need to do to accomplish that. So, our goal, obviously, is to serve the town of Hingham and serve its residents. And, you know, if you look at the last bullet point on there, we're basically the agency that people call when they don't know what else to deal with or how to fix the problem or anything else. And that will always be the case for us. We just need to adapt our mission as there are new things that came up in the last two years for our department in particular. COVID has been a, you know, big factor. And so, that's affected many things on a daily basis. So, before going to the next slide, I just wanna kind of highlight a couple of things that have some key things that have occurred within this last calendar year for our department. And most of them are actually budget-related. So, the first thing, and I'm sure, you know, if you looked at your budget books, you saw that our budget request for FY twenty-three substantially increased or increased over what our FY twenty-two budget was. The first reason for that is that our collective bargaining agreement. I'm very happy with the fact that, you know, the town was able to negotiate a new agreement with the firefighters' union. The previous one expired in FY twenty. So, the past two budgets, FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, were based on FY twenty numbers. We're now finally on board with that because we negotiated a one-year contract like the other unions and we signed a three-year contract that will bring us through to the end of FY twenty-four. So, the numbers that you're seeing in your budget book are actually real numbers now, unlike what they've been previously. Unfortunately, that also means that this is substantial increase in the salary cost, which is, you know, ninety-one percent of our budget. The second thing that we're also asking for increases, a lot of it is due to COVID-related type of expenses. Our vehicle maintenance is skyrocketing. Unfortunately, like many things, we're finding that there's significant delays. So, one of our engines had a repair that ended up taking over three months because we were waiting on parts and the engine was out of service that entire time. Our ambulance that we ordered back in March of twenty-twenty-one still hasn't been delivered yet. And that's usually about a six-month delivery time. This year, in this budget, we're asking for a new fire engine. We're already being told that it's probably at least a year and a half until we would, if we signed right now for a contract, we'd be looking at a year and a half. Usually, for a new engine, that's about eight months. So, everything has been taking a hit, and likewise, the expenses are taking a hit as well. Our EMS supplies, some of the supplies, like our gloves that we use all of the time, have pretty much doubled in cost from what they were previously. So, there are some other expenses in the budget that, you know, like the big-ticket items that we're really asking for changes with that. Some of the other significant changes that we've had that have occurred through our department is, and we'll talk on these a little bit later on in the presentation, is we're definitely seeing some shortages in our staffing levels. Unfortunately, it's a nationwide issue, trying to attract people into public safety and, in particular, people working in public safety, I'm sorry, in EMTs and paramedics. It got to the point where the governor enacted the National Guard to assist with private ambulance companies because they can't maintain the, you know, staffing levels that they need. This is something that we don't see going away anytime. And right now, we are short on staff, which has had a significant impact on our FY twenty-two overtime budget. We are working on some changes and I'll present on those later on tonight. But those are really the big three things that, you know, our last calendar year has had, is the contract, which we're, you know, very hopeful for. It seems to have improved morale. We're also hoping that it, you know, improves our ability to attract new candidates to come to work for us. And then the effects of COVID. Next slide, Michelle. Deputy LeChance is gonna cover the next two slides, talking about what we've done. Call-wise?
Good evening, everyone. As you can see from the slide, we'll talk a little bit about twenty-twenty and you can kind of see that our our call volume was actually down. We think that was, you know, during the first few months of the lockdown, businesses were closed, less people on the road. So, and people didn't wanna go to the hospital. So, our call volume was was lower in twenty-twenty. But as you can see, in twenty-twenty-one, it did jump up. The numbers you see on your slide do not include December. So, with our December numbers, you know, twenty-twenty-one was our busiest year that Hingham Fire has ever had. We were seven calls short of five thousand for the year. So, our total was forty-nine hundred and ninety-three calls for the year. And over thirty-two hundred of those calls were either medical calls or motor vehicle accidents. Again, our busiest year yet. You can see our transports have been going up a little bit each year, creeping up, except for that twenty-twenty year with COVID decreasing our call volume. Next slide, please. So, these are our transports by month, as you can see, for nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. The December numbers that are not on the slide, we did just over two hundred additional patient transports to local hospitals. So, for twenty-twenty-one, we actually transported two thousand two hundred and fifty-three patients to the hospital. Again, a big increase from the previous year and, you know, each year prior. So, our calls are going up. We're doing more calls. You know, our population is aging. We have Linden Pond, several nursing homes, assisted living, memory care units. So, our EMS division is staying very busy, very busy. Any questions on the run numbers or the call volume?
I'd like to, if we can, just continue the presentation.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. So, some of our key initiatives that we've been working on throughout this year, and I just touched on a little bit, there's a nationwide shortage. We know this. We know. And it's it's actually something that we've been kind of, you know, seeing precursors to this for the last few years. So, we know that there are no quick, easy fixes. It's something that, you know, we're working on a couple of different things, one of which we're gonna touch on later on in the presentation for a different request. But, you know, hopefully, with the new contract and with some other measures that we have, we can at least get a little bit ahead of it. But it is definitely a problem that's affecting many of our neighboring departments and across the country and across the state. Some other projects that we've been working on, the Public Safety Building Committee, I'm very happy to report that we're extremely pleased, working with the architects and the Public Safety Committee itself, on the progress that that project has had. We like the, you know, the state that it's at and what the services that it potentially could offer for our department. So, that that's been taking up a lot of time. Some of the next couple of bullet points on here are things that there are many staff members in our department that are involved in this. But I have to kind of highlight Deputy Levinson because this all falls on his responsibilities as the deputy in charge of operations and training. Since Deputy Levinson kind of, you know, joined the upper administrative team back in early this summer, like around March, or I'm sorry, not March, around May or June. Since then, he hit the floor running and has continued since then. So, we've had a lot more training. Case in point, we actually have had six days going to a burn building, which they're very specific buildings. There are not that many around. We went to Boston Fire Department, and that was the first time in over ten years that we've been able to do that level of training. Deputy Levinson set this up, six different days. We took all of the individual work groups. And then we had two makeup days for people that weren't able to make it. That training was excellent. It was, you know, something, again, that we haven't been able to do in over ten years. He's also working on changing some of our officer development. We're still unfortunately seeing some kickback from COVID, and it's difficult to get instructors to come in and teach classes or to take advantage of classes like the Massachusetts Fire Academy offers, just because everyone is so far behind and they're trying to make up these things. But we have had some classes with the MFA at our location, and we're working on creating others. We're also working on additional training, which we call pre-fire inspections, which basically means that our members get out in the community and they walk around through the commercial buildings and they familiarize themselves with them and all that stuff. And we're actually implementing a new software program that will allow us to better access some of that data that we're getting. So, Deputy Levinson and many other staff have been doing a great job kind of making sure that our staff is prepared and can handle whatever type of incidents that we may be faced with. Next bullet point, I don't think I need to go into comments about that much, but like every department, we're still dealing with COVID. We keep on thinking that we're turning the corner a little bit and then we're getting pulled back further into it and our workload kind of increases. So, that's ongoing, as I'm sure you're aware. The, you know, some of the Fire Department staff have been involved in the recent vaccine clinic that we hosted, and they'll be working on an additional one coming up next week and then additional ones beyond that. So, we're we're definitely very involved in this. The command group level is still meeting. At one point, I think the best we got was down to a two every two weeks. Now, we're back to every week again. And hopefully, we don't go back to where we were two years ago, where we were meeting seven days a week, but we're not, we're not there yet. So, that that it's it's been a busy year for us. And some of our long-term goals that hopefully we can still tackle, you know, piece by piece is to review a lot of old outdated rules and regulations at the Fire Department, some other SOPs, and to kind of continue updating our department. And next slide.
So, as you can see, we are budgeted for fifty-seven full-time personnel. Obviously, the chief of the department. There are two deputies. So, a couple of years ago, the there was one in the town, added a second. So, they kind of split the duties. The administrative deputy handles budgets, policies, discipline, the emergency medical services side of the Fire Department. Um, the administrative deputy handles, uh, budgets, policies, discipline, um, the emergency medical services side of the fire department. And the new position that was created was operations and training, uh, which currently is Deputy Levinson. Um, and just that, day-to-day operations, he interacts with the crews, the on-duty shifts in, uh, the department training. Um, one officer manage, office manager, uh, one fire prevention officer. Um, four captains, which are our shift commanders, uh, so we run four work groups, twenty-four, seven. So, um, each group will have a captain and he or she is in charge of that group for that twenty-four-hour period. Um, twelve lieutenants, the lieutenants work on, uh, the engines or the ladder truck. And they supervise the individual companies out in the fields. Um, and thirty-six firefighter EMTs slash paramedics. So, um, we are budgeted for the fifty-seven, and as the chief explained earlier, uh, with the new collective bargaining agreement, um, those current salaries would be at six million five hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. Um, the chief did touch on this a little bit, our expenses. Um, obviously, we've seen, everybody can see this at the gas, gas pumps nowadays, vehicle fuel has gone up in price. Um, repair and maintenance of our buildings, our buildings are getting older, uh, more costly to fix. Um, we're actually having a difficult time finding people to come in and fix the buildings, uh, to do work on them, on the heating system and, and stuff like that. Um, the chief touched on the vehicles, um, our vehicle maintenance budget has increased. Um, it's harder for us to get parts, vehicles are out of service for longer periods of time. And, um, vehicles are more complicated than they were years ago, um, a lot of electronics, a lot of computers. Um, places we used to send vehicles to no longer can handle our vehicles, we have to send them to specialized places. So, um, bringing our expenses up to, uh, six hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three.
Okay, next slide. So, this year we had two additional requests. Um, the first one is something new, the second one we've been asking for for a while. Um, the first one, as I mentioned, one of our, um, options that we're looking at to try to address our staffing needs is typically we want to hire paramedics. We've been doing that predominantly since, um, the last twenty years, uh, and actually more than that, about twenty-two years now. And that's something that we've had good success with. Unfortunately, the number of candidates are decreasing and the, um, the demand for them, for the positions available is kind of flip-flop. So fifteen years ago, there was probably fifteen candidates for every position that we had open. Now it's the exact opposite, now there's probably twenty positions, meaning twenty different communities that are hiring at the same time for one candidate. And so it's really a very competitive world out there. Um, and we're trying, and I'm hoping that the new contract will help that. We built some additional incentives into the new contract, trying to incentivize people to come here. And we've actually recently just called for a new hire list, and Deputy Le Chance met with two candidates that came in to sign the list today. So hopefully this will help a little bit, but we also recognize that this is a long-term problem. And one of the things that we're looking to try to potentially do is rather than hiring paramedics that are already trained, we're looking at potentially hiring EMTs and then training them as paramedics ourselves. Uh, some other departments, specifically Randolph, already uses this mechanism, uh, and they've had some good success with it, so we want to try it. But there are additional fees to that, that A, we would have to pay someone to be, to attend paramedic school, and then B, we would have to probably cover their training. So if we have them working as a firefighter EMT and they need to attend class, then we would have to pay someone overtime to cover them. And that's something that we're not budgeted for, so that's the, uh, the reason for the two sides of the expense. Uh, the second request is something that we've been asking for for a few years now. Uh, and we've had some success, but, you know, uh, we haven't gotten there all the way. So the history on this is that we have to staff a minimum number of people per day to continue to provide the same number of services, the same number of fire engines, same number of in, um, ambulances, et cetera. Right now, we have a minimum staffing level, which is eleven people, we have a maximum staffing level that is thirteen. Back in two thousand and five, we were actually budgeted to have fourteen as the upper number. And then in budget recessions in twenty-eight or budget cuts in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that number was actually reduced. And we've been asking since then to get back to the twenty, uh, to the fourteen, because we think it's the right and balance between how many people are on duty, i.e. the eleven, versus how many we're staffed for, so that we're not paying overtime every time someone's out on a vacation day, they're out injured, they're out sick or anything else. And this last year in particular has been very difficult for that. Uh, we currently have five people out on injuries right now, three of which have been on long-term injuries, and we don't anticipate either of them coming back within the next couple of months, unfortunately. Um, so that really kills our budget. Uh, we also had, uh, two members that served in, one in the, um, Army Reserve, another one in the National Guard, that were activated for different periods throughout the year, that hurt us as well. Um, and now we're really starting to see an uptick again in COVID, uh, numbers that we have staff that are up for that or anything. So all of these things impact our budget, and we believe that if we were able to increase the number that we allowed out before we had to hire, then that will help and that will eventually offset our overtime. So that's the request for the, uh, for additional firefighters, that would not increase our minimum number, it'd increase the maximum though. So. Um, any questions? That kind of summarizes, um, our needs and our requests.
Thank you, um, so before I go to questions, I did, didn't know if Deputy Le Chance or Deputy Levinson had anything else they wanted to add, and then I'll, then I'll turn it over to questions. E- either one, um.
Um, no, no, I think the chief really, uh, really hit the nail on the head, um, with our staffing issues right now. Um, that's kind of one of my biggest fears, that's what I, what scares me the most right now. Um, if you ask Deputy Levinson, I'll let him speak for himself, his will probably be the buildings that, um, we occupy at the moment.
Yep.
Um, you know, our staffing is down, we are short nine positions right now. Um, we did call, you know, for civil service for a list yesterday, so we did have two candidates, possible candidates come in today. Um, hopefully we get a few more throughout the rest of the week. Um, but unfortunately with civil service, it kind of ties our hand, and it's, it's a lengthy, lengthy process to get people actually in the door working.
Deputy Levinson?
Uh, yep, can you hear me?
I can hear, but I can't see you.
Yeah, I, I can't get the video to come on.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, no, like Deputy Le Chance said, there's some issues with the buildings, we're trying to keep up with on maintenance and stuff. Takes time. It's moving along with the Public Safety Building, that will take care of one station, not necessarily the issues at Station Three, but we're still working on that. As far as training, I'm just trying to keep everybody up to speed. Uh, there's a lot of things we have to deal with on a daily basis and a, a lot of new people that haven't experienced a lot of issues yet, so just trying to get ahead of that and give them some exposure to things that might come up once in a while. It's coming to the season, so we're getting ready to start our ice training, once the, the water freezes over. And we'll be working on some tool-related issues later in the month and February. See even simple hand tools and stuff like that, just to keep everybody, keep everybody, uh, up to speed due to their lack of experience at the moment.
Great. Uh, Liz, I'm gonna start with you. Um, any questions for, uh, Chief Murphy or the two deputies?
Yes, well, first, thank you, thank you, Chiefs, thank you, Deputy Chiefs, thank you for everything you, you're due for, for the town to keep us safe. Um, Chief Murphy, just a question about the, the approach in terms of the additional um, for firefighters, those are obviously included in the salary line item for the budget, right? Um, but it looks like the overtime is increasing as well, can you just explain that? Maybe I didn't catch that.
Yeah, so this is something that we've worked with a advisory subgroup that we meet with, um, and we've had discussions with Tom and Michelle that, um, the way we do our overtime request usually is to buy a certain number of hours. So that number of hours has not changed, um, up until this year. Um, and it was something that, you know, for the last few years, we were trying to, uh, determine if that was a correct amount of hours that we're buying or not. So in other words, when we have a change in the contract, then obviously the amount of, or the dollar figure for overtime changes, but the hour figure did not. And this past year, based on the amount of injuries and everything else, even though we're still trying to figure out what that correct number should be, I kind of said we have to change that base dollar figure anyway, or I mean, the outnumber, number of hours, uh, because I know we're not getting close to it. And we've, like I said, we've been discussing this with the advisory groups for years as to where we should be, and it's very hard because there's so many different factors that, you know, play into it. Uh, if we're at full staffing, if we're, you know, how many injuries we have, um, whatever the case, it's just, it's, it's monumental to the number of possibilities. But yeah, the short answer of it is, is that we did increase that number of hours, so.
Okay. And the staffing level, I know we've talked about this before, so the new firefighters would, would increase the maximum there, but it would still be eleven per shift, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And is that, is that dependent on the population of the town, like, do you see that changing?
Um, that's a good question. It really depends on the definition of changing of the population. You know, so we've discussed it beforehand, and if large sections of town are developed out, i.e. South Hingham or anything like that, then we would have to look at whether or not our current staffing model allows us to continue to service, you know? Because you may have heard us mention beforehand that fire departments are different than the police department in the fact that, you know, we typically respond from the stations. And our, you know, all of our national metrics that we use are usually about the time to personnel arriving on scene. And we're at the police department, they're out in the community, so an increase in, you know, a large area of town would require additional police officers and possibly additional, you know, patrols or however, um, you want to label it. But in our case, a lot of times it's based on how quickly we can get to that area. And so, yes, we can increase a certain thing, but it might not necessarily increase what we need. But in this case, if we had large developments that we couldn't get to in the, um, timeframe that we're looking at, then yeah, that could impact how we deliver services. Um, so it's, it's just one of those things that as you're, you know, like I said, traffic especially is our biggest interest, you know, and ease of roads on getting to certain locations or anything.
Right, right, no, that's, that's helpful. Um, and one of the things that we're looking in for the Sustainable Budget Task Force is the population growth, and certainly, you know, your call volume and all, all the activities that, that you're doing plays into that in terms of just being able to provide the, the services that we need to for citizens.
Um, if, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt, one thing too, that obviously depends on what type of growth we're looking at. So if the town was looking at Linden Ponds expanding, then that has a higher tax on our services than if it was, you know, a residential section, you know? So all of those things take effect, you know, even like on, you know, um, what do you call it, um, the, you know, epic bridges by Epic, you know? Um, that's a small facility, but that still has a significant, you know, impact on our department.
Right, right, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then I know, obviously, you've, you've been impacted by COVID quite a bit, um, and I know you've been great about, um, working, submitting for ARPA funds and FEMA and everything that's available, so I'm sure we'll continue to do that. Um, so that's, that hopefully will help somewhat this year as well, but, thank you.
You're welcome, uh, yeah, we, we are working on that again. Um, right now, we have submitted FEMA requests through the end of last fiscal year, and I'm actually working on the applications to continue them going forward. We were happy, um, although actually work-wise, we're not happy with it, but we are eligible to continue applying for FEMA reimbursements right now through in, the end of April twenty twenty-two. Um, so originally that was, uh, the cutoff was September of twenty-one, and then they extended that. Uh, there's a good chance that that could get extended even further, you know? Um, so yes, we will continue to apply for those.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep.
Bill? Couple of comments and then a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I want to, uh, thank you, Chief, and, and your team for, uh, the great work you've been doing. Um, uh, and I haven't had a chance to publicly congratulate you, uh, Deputy Levinson for, um, uh, your promotion and, uh, the training you're doing is fantastic, that burn house training sounds absolutely outstanding. So thank you for what you're doing for the, for, for the entire fire department. Um, you know, it's not lost on me that the past two years, the fire department's been at the tip of the spear in combating COVID, and all, all the runs you've been doing and all the, the work you've been doing is outstanding, so thanks for that. You know, I, I think it was the day after, might have been either New Year's Day or the day after New Year's. I think you had multiple runs the entire day. Um, I, I read that, um, I think online, so your work is never-ending. And, um, I, I appreciate all, all, all the work that the fire department does for us, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And also, the, the, the work, the, the, the work that you're doing with the booster clinics is greatly appreciated by our target community. So having our firefighters help our community with these clinics has, has been great and so well-received by our, our residents. So that's also very much appreciated. With the additional request, the two EMTs, uh, they're already on the department, right? So they're gonna be, um, they're gonna go to paramedic school, but these are already individuals already on our force, correct?
No, so this actual request is just to get the funding to do it. And, um, I've actually spoken with a couple of Hingham residents that are, um, interested in that. So that's what it would be for, not to, this is not to send current members, this would be to hire someone as an EMT that's not in paramedic school and then send them to paramedic school.
Oh, so there would be, so you're looking to hire six new personnel total?
So of the vacancies that we have, rather than hiring, um, all paramedics, uh, because frankly, we, we tried, um, a few months ago to hire, you know, eight paramedics, and we didn't get anybody. We're hopeful now that we're gonna get a little bit more with the new contract, and there have been additions to the civil service list, so people that just became paramedics that, you know, since the last time we, that we tried to hire. So what we're figuring is that best-case scenario, we're not gonna get nine, we know that. So if we got, you know, um, say six paramedics and then could get two EMTs, that's what this funding would be for, to send those additional, uh, people. So it would not be, these are those two EMTs that were listed, there are not additional staff, that's just to send employees to paramedic school.
Okay, great. Um, and also, uh, with respect to some of the concerns you mentioned here, I wrote some of them down. Um, on, uh, with respect to staffing, a lot of work was put into the collective bargaining agreement, there's been some increases there with respect to salaries. We're hoping that that, um, resolves some of the staffing issues. Um, we're able to keep a lot of, I know that we lose firefighters to other departments because of salaries. Hopefully, uh, some of the increases there will resolve that issue. Um, with respect to the buildings issue, obviously, a lot of effort's been going on with the Public Safety Building, you, you're a big part of that, Chief, obviously. And we're looking at the other, uh, other capital projects in town. One of the concerns that's been, um, relayed to me by, uh, some of the members of the department, and rightfully so, because I've seen it, is the roof at Central Fire. Um, is there anything that we can do to help you with that? Has anything been done to address it? Um, I was so, I was, uh, I was shown some of the, the water damage there, and it's of a concern to me that that is some of the conditions over there. Obviously, it's, um, kind of above your pay scale, you're not, you're not a roofer. Um, can you tell me briefly what, what's going on with the roof and can we do anything to help?
So we actually have another request in, um, it was initially done through this year's capital, um, to address that. Um, I believe, and, um, Tom and Michelle can speak more to this, but I believe there's a question whether or not that's getting moved um, from a capital to a warrant article, or I'm not sure on the status, but we are requesting funding for the, to replace the entire roof, so.
Okay.
Would you like me to speak to some of that, Bill?
I, if you could, Tom, yeah, that'd be great.
Sure, sure, I'm happy to. So the chief has come to us, explained and explained in detail, um, a number of the failings of the central station as well as the south station. And obviously, we all know what's going on at North, and we're hopeful that those are going to be resolved with the new facility up on, uh, three A. Um, we are evaluating these needs, there's, uh, as, you know, you pointed out, there's, there's a lot of needs and they're expensive. Um, we are evaluating those, we're trying to, as we go through the budget process bill, we'll be working with this, um, Sustainable Budgeting Task Force's recommendations and understanding the implications of all the capital, uh, needs and that are coming before. and that are coming before us and/or not. And, um, and then we'll evaluate what can fit into what we can afford to do this year or not. Um, that's all to come. So Steve has done, uh, the chief has done uh, his, his role in submitting them to us for evaluation. And that, that evaluation process will happen over the next month or so. Um, and then you'll get recommendations from me from, for both, um, additional capital, uh, projects, either in the form of capital submissions or, um, or perhaps articles like, like the chief mentioned. And by the way, that also rings true for any additional requests that you're seeing in their budgets. So what you see for budgets in these presentations are additional requests being made by the department heads. You will get a document from me outlining all of the additional requests from all of the department heads that we receive and my subsequent recommendation. So that's still to come as well. That probably will be another, uh, three or four weeks out, uh, as the select, uh, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force wraps up their work.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Great. Um, so Chief Murphy, your, your department is, is, um, in some ways, underappreciated. Um, people assume it's there, they just assume things will work. Um, and you and your team, uh, make sure it works and, and we really appreciate that. Um, and it's, it's important that we look at the budget and make sure that it, it meets the needs, uh, of the department. Um, I wanna turn to, uh, first to a, a point that, uh, Liz was raising in terms of, uh, your overtime budget. It's, it's projected to grow, uh, I think it, over twenty-one percent, um, over a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, it, and I understand that's based in part on increased, uh, pay rate as well as increased hours. Um, but that, that's a significant jump, um, is what can, what can be done to help manage that?
So as I mentioned, I think the, uh, clearly the biggest increase in that though is based on the, um, changes in the contract and the salary. So if you remember, we were dealing with contract numbers that were two years old, um, for FY twenty-two. So that's a, the substantial change. When I said I asked for additional hours or requesting additional hours, that wasn't as substantial. Uh, so I'd have to look, I'm looking at the actual budget right now. I'm asking for ten thousand five hundred hours. Last year, I believe we were just under ten thousand. Uh, so it was not like we're, you know, asking to double the amount of hours.
Okay, okay.
The biggest change is the, you know, the salary changes. So.
Um, yeah, that makes sense. Um, your, you, you talked about the increase in, um, vehicle fuel oil. Um, yeah, I'm not fuel oil, fuel. Um, uh, but you, you also have heating oil. Uh, your heating oil budget is up by fifty-five percent. Um, are, are, is that a question about the efficiency of the buildings or is it, you're, you're just projecting big increases in oil prices?
So all of the fuel and utilities come from the town's fuel and utility, you know, worksheets. So likewise, we just budget, um, for the number of, you know, for the vehicles. Um, we did actually increase, um, substantially because we were, what we did with the, the vehicle fuel is we looked at the amount that we've used this fiscal year. Um, and then we projected that going forward because as Deputy LaChance mentioned, FY twenty-one or calendar year twenty twenty was an off-year for us and we know that. And our call volume and everything else reflect the fact that, you know, our call volume is probably in line where it should have been if twenty twenty hadn't happened. I think we still would have seen the same percent increases. Um, so we tried to get better numbers from this fiscal year to this point and what we're using per month and everything else because, you know, businesses are open and all that stuff. We can't really use the numbers from a year ago. Uh, so that's the first thing. But then, like I said, for the other amounts, it's based on what the town is paying for it. So it, we, we track our, um, our heating bills and everything else on a monthly basis. And we just calculate how much we use per year and then that gets plugged in. Well, I know there was some significant raises, um, or increases in what the town had to pay for the amounts for fuel and for, um, home heating oil and all that stuff. So that kinda reflects the changes.
Right, okay. And, and I, I know that there is an overall push in the town to achieve greater energy efficiency. Uh, and I expect that will, um, move over into your department as well.
We, I can add to that, that, or Deputy Levinson, I'm sure can elaborate further. We are in the process of trying to do as much as we can with that as well. We just replaced, um, all of the lights on the apparatus floor at headquarters, um, with, you know, more energy efficient, um, bulbs. And, um, we are in the process of doing that with the outside stations. I believe we're all done right now with Station Three. Um, and we have Station Two that is being worked on as well. So we're, we're trying whenever we can to convert over to LED or anything else that's more efficient. But, you know, a lot of it is that, you know, when you have buildings that are, you know, built in the nineteen forties and you have boilers that are original and, you know, they don't really have very great insulation or anything else, there's changing the light bulbs out is only gonna help so much.
Yeah, no, we, we've all taken the tour and we, we, we've seen exactly what you're up against. Tom, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Joe. I just wanted to point out, um, you know, Chief Murphy glosses over it very humbly, but I just want the town and you all to recognize that, um, Hingham is uniquely aggressive in its pursuit of FEMA reimbursements. And that is, uh, entirely or nearly entirely attributable to, uh, Steve Murphy's efforts. Uh, Chief does a great job in, you know, seeking, uh, outside dollars and bringing them back into the community to help us with, um, what we all know are extremely difficult budgeting times. So, um, like to the tune of, uh, six figures and more. So, um, again, uh, Chief, thank you very much for everything you do in that, in that, um, in that world. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Are there, uh, any members of the public with questions for, uh, Chief Murphy? I see none, so, um, we will then turn to the next item, which is off also with Chief Murphy, the public safety utilities.
Hang on, I gotta, I put something up. Okay. So the, um, public safety utilities, the first one, um, is listed as emergency water, um, and this is something that we've been, you know, um, budgeting for, for years. Uh, basically what this is, is that this is the water that we would use if we had a fire. What, um, whether it's training or for an actual fire or anything else, then Aquarian used to charge a town where River is still doing the same thing. So the first amount in the majority of that account is for water usage. Um, we do actually track or estimate how much we're used. So if we had a fire, we can kinda guesstimate how many hours we're flowing certain lines and everything else. And we kinda report those numbers to wherever now, um, and that helps with that. There is also one additional line item in that fee, which is for ten thousand dollars, which is fire hydrant repair. Um, so we actually have two separate line items for repairs of hydrants. One is emergency repair, which is this one. The other one is for, um, routine repair or replacement. So the way I've always looked at this line item is that this would be something that if a hydrant, that especially a critical hydrant was hit by a car and we didn't know who that was and we couldn't go after the insurance company or anything else and we needed to replace that, then that would cover that. And years ago, ten thousand dollars would cover two hydrants. Now we can barely get, um, one and a half. And, um, because the hydrant costs, like everything is increased. But that's what the second, uh, fee of this is. So combined with that, then that provides the emergency water and then the, um, emergency hydrants, which we actually have not spent the money out of the emergency hydrants, I believe, in two fiscal years now, so.
Um, so one and a half hydrants. How, what do you do with a half a hydrant?
We hope that we can replace a part of it, you know? So sometimes some of the hydrants are more serviceable than others. So it may not have gotten completely destroyed and we can, you know, replace a valve in it, or not the valve, but replace a portion of it or do something else. So believe it or not, you can actually buy parts for hydrants, not just a one size thing.
It's out in front of your house, Joe.
Yeah, sure. If, if I can ask, wha- what is the state, do you have a sort of an inventory of our fire hydrants in terms of aging and, and projected needs for replacement, things like that?
Yeah, so we actually started doing that years ago, um, and I'm happy to say that with, where, where River, um, they have budgeted additional money and Russ has done a great job with it. So right now, um, we're kinda caught up. Uh, I think he may still have one or two that he's, um, waiting on the construction crews to replace, um, that for broken hydrants or anything. But he's kinda doing a great job taking that over and, you know, developing a replacement program, um, with the support of the, you know, town budget as well, uh, to continue doing that. So we, I think we're in great shape. We still do have a numbers of hydrants from the fifties and sixties that we'd love to get replaced. But if they're being properly maintained, then that buys us a little bit of time. And, you know, um, where River and his staff are doing a fantastic job, much better than what we were dealing with with Aquarian.
That's great. Good to hear. Liz Klein, any questions?
No questions. Um, thank you. I was just gonna ask about that because I know where River Water System is also maintaining the hydrant. So that's great. Glad to see that. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
No questions.
Any member of the public with questions? Seeing none. Um, Chief, thank you. And, uh, Deputies, uh, LaChance and Levinson, uh, again, your services are greatly appreciated and, uh, we look forward to, uh, a wonderful fire department and a wonderful new, uh, public safety building where, uh, you'll have a new, a new, uh, fire station. Okay. Uh, we will turn to uh, that big green monster to Shrek, uh, South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center. And I believe we have our town administrator, Tom Mayo, to discuss that.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, so this is the budget, this is, uh, an annual budget based on an assessment uh, that Hingham shares with the three other communities that make up our regional dispatch center, uh, which is, by the way, but based in Hingham Town Hall. Uh, the other towns we share this, um, service with are Norwell, Hull and Cohasset. Um, Shrek provides, um, uh, what do you call it? Um, services for nine-one-one call-taking, um, emergency, uh, medical instruction, police and fire dispatching, um, all twenty-four seven. So we have a very dedicated, um, uh, professional staff of dispatchers, uh, based at Hingham Town Hall for those four towns. Uh, those, that staff of seventeen are, um, managed by Executive Director Aaron Smith as well as a deputy director and five supervisors. Um, they've managed, you know, upwards of seventy thousand calls in fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, that's across the four towns. And our assessment is nine hundred, for this year is projected at nine hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars. That is subject to some slight change as we finalize all the budgets. It's a, it's a little bit of an early estimate, but it's gonna be very close to that. Um, and it's based on a combination of, um, of our population and our service calls. Is a, uh, uh, an agreed upon metric that make up the, um, that calculates the assess, the assessment for each community.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Um, just a question, has, have the calls for service gone up? Tom is?
In Hingham, they have, yeah, they've gone up quite a bit in Hingham. I wanna say upwards of five or more percent.
Okay. So I imagine Hingham's paying the majority of the fee.
Yes, we are, we are by far the larger, the largest, um, share of the, of the cost and the, the largest community in the, in the group.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
Uh, no, no, no questions.
Tom, if I can just follow up on Liz's question, you, you said that it's gone up significantly in Hingham. Is it, are we disproportionately increased compared to the, the other towns?
So I believe that Hull, excuse me, Hingham and Cohasset, um, calls have increased while Norwell and Hull's halls have, calls have decreased. So, um, I didn't do an analysis of prior years, I'm guessing that's a little bit helter skelter. Uh, kinda goes up and down depending on any given year. I don't know that there's any trending there.
Okay, great. Um, any member of the public with questions for Mr. Mayo? Seeing none. Um, Tom, thank you. Uh, really appreciate your efforts there.
Yep.
Um, I believe we, uh, still have Chief Murphy around, um, cuz we're gonna turn to, uh, the next item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the agreement with Stryker Medical to purchase two cardiac monitors and defibrillators for the fire department. Um, Chief Murphy, and I think Kathy Riley is here as well.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, uh, good evening again. Uh, so this is, um, as you just alluded, this is a request to replace two of our, um, cardiac monitors that we use on a daily basis on the ambulances. Um, last year at Capital, we requested to purchase four additional monitors because we actually physically have four ambulances, the two that are primary, that are in service twenty-four seven. And then we have two, uh, reserve ambulances, uh, that we occasionally staff based on the need. Um, whether it's a storm, we might put additional people on or, um, parades or whatever the case. So we had asked to get those because under our licensing, they're actually required to have a, uh, this type of cardiac monitor for us to continue to provide paramedic life support. Um, so they are necessary. We asked Capital for four of them. We also applied for a FEMA AFG grant for four of them. Um, unfortunately, we were denied on the AFG grant because it was extremely competitive. Uh, more so more applicants this year than they had previously. So we didn't get that in Capital, um, kinda knew this and when we met with them, they asked, well, could you deal with getting two? And then asking for a request for Capital again this year for the additional two and we agreed that that made sense. So that's what this is for. This would purchase two for the primary ambulances. Um, and then if Capital approves it, we will, uh, probably next year replace, um, the other that we have for the reserved ambulances, so.
And, and the total cost for the two is, uh, a little under sixty-four thousand?
Correct, yes. Yeah, I think it's, um, I, I see, I'm gonna comment sixty-two and change or something.
Sixty-three, seven, sixty-seven. Yeah, um. Uh, Kathy, anything you wanted to add?
Um, just that, uh, we purchased, we were able to purchase them through a, um, a cooperative out of, a national cooperative out of Colorado. Um, so we got a, um, we didn't have to go out to bid individually, um, ourselves and got a good price.
Um, I, I note that the contract provides that, uh, this will be delivered by the end of this month. Um, given supply concerns, is that still realistic?
Um, I see, uh, Captain Becker, uh, Jeff Becker is on. I don't know if he can answer that. I don't have that answer. Um, uh, we hope that we can get them as soon as we can, but I don't, I don't know, Jeff, I don't know if you have anything from them. But.
Last night.
Not a great connection here.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, I can't see the vendor didn't object to it.
Okay, so, okay, so.
And we can always extend it if we have to.
So wh- while we're talking, Chief, if you wanna text him and maybe you can get a written response cuz we could, I couldn't certainly couldn't understand anything, um, that, that he was saying. Um, so, uh, Liz, any questions on this?
So I may have missed this, Chief, I apologize, but these are new ones to replace what's in the ambulance currently?
Correct.
Okay. And they last, uh, how, what's the, how long do they last typically?
So the ones that we're replacing are over ten years old now. Um, and we've actually, it's kind of funny that we've been postponing this purchase for a few years because the other ones were in good shape and our manufacturer was telling us that, hey, as long as we continue doing the servicing on them, then, you know, this is great. Um, I wouldn't buy new ones and all that stuff. And they're finally telling us that, hey, the older monitors, we're not gonna be able to service them. And, you know, these, obviously because they're a medical device, they have to get, um, regularly inspected and there's a whole chain that goes through it. So, um, yes, we're replacing these, um, they're the same brand that our staff is familiar with. Um, very, very similar, uh, features and stuff, so it won't cause any additional training or anything else.
Okay.
Uh, and Jeff just texted me saying that they're about fourteen weeks out. And Jeff just texted me saying that they're about 14 weeks out on the delivery. So obviously we still have the old ones. We're not trading anything in because we're keeping the old ones to use in the reserve ambulances. So that will, this, we can still continue to use these until we get the new ones.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill, any, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
So just if it's 14 weeks and this contract before us has a completion date required of January 31st, do we need to have any amendments to this agreement or are we going to sign it and then just it'll be extended as needed?
Given that information, I think that we can adjust it before Tom signs it so that we have a more realistic, after I talk to the vendor, have a more realistic expectation? If that's okay with everyone?
Yeah, but we, we should have you know.
The definitive date?
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be definite, but I think we need a reasonable range. So, I mean, we're talking about if 14 weeks. So if, if we had it, a term that it, it basically extended it for four months, four months from the date of signature, that should cover, that more than covers a 14 weeks. And then if, then if there's a problem there, I think we can go back. Art, Tom, are you comfortable with that?
I am. Yep.
Okay.
Jeff just texted. He will call and, and speak with our rep tomorrow and make sure the changes are, you know, are doable and to see if we're still on the 14 week period.
Great. Okay. So I just don't recall. I got questions from Liz. Did Bill, have I asked you for questions?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Any member of the public with questions? Then I am prepared to accept a motion. And I would just suggest that the, the motion include the extension of up to four months for receipt of the of the cardiac monitors.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Stryker Sales LLC to supply the town with two cardiac monitors, LifePak, 15V4 monitor, D-Fib, in an amount not to exceed $63,767.92 with the timeline extended four months.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
We are approved. Great. Thank you. And Chief, does that get you off the hook for tonight?
I think so, but I'm still going to stick around for the next one or two.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a license agreement with the Mobile Med LLC for a temporary COVID-19 testing site. So before I turn this over to Jackson Stone, or really to anyone else, Tom or Michelle, do you want to give us the background for this? And then I'll, I'll turn it over to Jackson.
So I can, I can start and Michelle, you can jump in where I fall short. We hear the community, we've heard the three of you, and we understand that a, a regional code, uh, testing site is absolutely needed. That's obvious as you look at the, at the state, the state increase in COVID cases. So we've been working with, with my team out of our office, Michelle and Art and others, as well as the command group, has reached out to contractor we used last year for the COVID testing that we did. His name is Jackson Stone. He's present tonight. And we have settled on a solution that will allow us to start this testing as early as next week, which is fantastic and, and, and moving very quickly. Our DPW has been instrumental in helping us figure out the logistics of the site. We're going to do the, the clinic or the, the testing site will be held at 335 Lincoln Street. That's the site of our projected site of our new proposed public safety facility up on Route 3A. So you know, there's a, there's a lot of details that go into how this is going to work. Some of that will be covered in my COVID report tonight, but to the extent we needed a contract to engage Mr. Stone and his, and his company to do this work. And that's what this contract is for. Michelle, how, what have I missed?
I can go over the basics. As you said, Jackson is back in action. This time is Mobile Med LLC. And he's partnering with COVID Clinic, Inc., which I think now is the largest provider of COVID-19 testing solutions across the country. As Tom said, he'll be at 335 Lincoln Street. Unlike the last time we did this on Cushing Street, this will be a drive-through facility. We are planning for it to be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. That was in line with the most popular testing days when we did this the first time around with Jackson. The hours will likely be 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we're looking at having priority access for residents and employees of Hingham, as well as some of our neighboring communities that we're partnering on this in, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Still, folks from Hingham can use the site anytime from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but we're trying to reserve those morning hours for, for people in Hingham, Hull, Cohasset and Situate to just make sure that our community members can get in there at this regional site. Jackson will talk more about the different tests that are being offered, but we are definitely offers, offering PCR tests and those will be billed through insurance. So there will be no out of pocket charge for those. Then there'll be a, a range of other tests offered for, with out of pocket charges, including rapid antigen tests and antibody tests and others that Jackson and his team are able to offer there. Everything will be by appointment only at the site. And we do have Sergeant Kilroy on the line who can, is helping us develop a traffic plan, but that's a point that Tom and I and Jackson and everyone will stress as we get this up and running. It will be appointment only. Walk-ins will, will be turned away to make sure that we can actually maintain access to the site for folks with appointments and control the traffic flow through that area. To start, people will be, may, will be able to make appointments online through an easy to use system, just like they did last time. And you'll be able to see appointment availability for five days at a time. I think those are the basic, the basic outlines. Right now, Jackson can go into a lot more detail. We can answer other questions. We are planning to pay for this through a regional grant that we have secured through DPH, and we also have some ARPA funds to back that up in case that's needed.
Great. So with that, I do see Jackson Stone on the line. So if you could describe the arrangement, your, what you're going to be delivering, how you're going to be delivering it and what the town can look forward to.
Problem. So as, as Michelle and Tom said, this is a different location than the testing site that we had up earlier this year and at the end of last year. Last year, you'll remember it was in the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant or the old municipal lighting plant on Cushing Street, which was perhaps a little bit suboptimal from the perspective of it being used by the rowing team and, and also a little bit off the, the beaten path for, 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 for the population centers in town, but maybe more importantly here for the other communities in the area, Situate, Hull and Cohasset, which are, which are closer to, to the proposed location on 3A. The, 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 the services will be delivered a little bit differently, but it'll, it'll look and feel the same in, in other ways. You know, we'll still be doing PCR tests. In this case, there we're hoping that, that we'll be able to continue to offer tests or, excuse me, start offering tests outside. So it'll be a drive-up site as opposed to a site where people are, are walking in through a large building, coming in and registering and, and going out at the end. It's a little bit different. There's a, um, there's, as, as you might know, there's a parking lot next to 335 who has, or that, that Tom, Michelle and, and the rest of the folks working on this have identified as a suitable location for cars to line up between, I think, 25 to 30 or so cars can line up at a time. And we're working, as, as Michelle said, with, with a partner, COVID Clinic, who we identified as is a very large provider that, that did a good job scaling and, and, and being able to deliver a large number of tests and have a reliable supply chain of PPE and the other equipment it takes to deliver these, which, which we found, you know, I would say a little bit more challenging frankly, than them with a bit of a smaller scale. So the, the, the different tests that'll be offered, we've, we've got, you know, I think everyone's sort of pleased that, that we were hoping to be able to offer or that we can offer free PCR tests, which last time costs $140. And that's partly due to this, this partnership with, with COVID Clinic, I think. And then in addition to those, there'll be options for faster tests and for antibody tests. So the faster tests called antigen tests will be able to be swabbed in that location and then get same day results that are delivered by a clinician who, who, who ran the sample at point of care at, at, at the site. Those have become, I would say, more, more common to use this year when people are realizing that from a public health perspective, even though they're slightly less accurate than the PCR, which is very, very effective at detecting any viral particles. There maybe 5% less accurate or maybe a little bit more, but they, they're very fast and, and they allow people to identify an infection quickly and, and isolate faster if, if they are contagious with COVID-19. So there are a few other tests, including a, a flu combination test, but, but at all times, there'll be the same level sort of in the sense of having a, a PCR test offered. But, but this, this time around, it'll be free at, at the, or, or no cost, out of pocket and, and billed through insurance as opposed to an out of pocket cost, which we had last time. For patients, for, for community members, patients that, that don't have insurance, which we found to be a minority of individuals coming to the site last time, but it did happen. They'll still be offered a test for free. It'll be the same situation for them and, and it won't be billed through insurance at all. They'll, they'll just get a free test. So happy to dive into any of the other details. I suppose I'll just say that the site, the site is partially nearly fully recruited. We have enough staff to, to operate the site next week in our pipeline. And, and we have equipment flying in the air on a pallet from one of, one of COVID Clinic's warehouses, just in anticipation that, that we might move forward on this and, and to make sure that we're ready to open it up quickly because things move, move fast with COVID right now. Yeah, happy, happy to answer any questions and, and thanks for, for having me present here.
Jackson, thank you. I want to turn next to Sergeant Kilroy if you can speak about how traffic is expected to be managed at the site.
Hey, sir, how you doing? So we ended up, we ended up going down there, processing the site like we said. DBW worked really hard to open up the areas there. It's going to be coming in off Essington. The entrance will be over behind the, it'll be over behind Fresh Market. They will be able to still access that area. I met with their management team. They were, they were excellent. They have some concerns about the entrance and truck access for the loading dock, but met with them. I got the rundown of their trucks and how many come each day, et cetera. And we'll have an officer there to help get the trucks in and out. Not a problem. We have ample space. If we need to do two lanes, we can upon entry. But it looks as though the plan will work nicely with the flow. It's pretty much one-way traffic in and back out of the site. And there'll be a detail officer presence there as well.
Okay, great. So I'm going to start with some questions, I think primarily for Jackson, and then I'll open it up to our, my fellow board members. Let me start with how do people register for the test? What, where, where do they go? What, is there an online access now or is that something that's going to be published later?
There is an online access now to the site. I presume we'll get that running over the course of the next, the next week. It would be on, on our partner's website, COVID Clinic. And if you go to their homepage, there's a book and appointment link and, and it'll show up. If your computer allows their website to identify your location, it should show up on, on the map. And you click and there'll be a book and appointment button, very similar to last time. You'll select the test. So, so you'll either use the, the PCR test or you'll decide to do an antigen test or, or whatever it is that people are, are getting tested for. And then they'll confirm an appointment time and they'll have a basic sort of medical intake form that, that they'll fill out. And then, and then they'll book it, get a confirmation email, show up and get tested on site. The, the the agreement that, that we've, we've drafted includes a window for residents of, of Hingham and, and the other communities that are participating in, in the program to have just, just their residents tested in, in, in the mornings. And I believe that's, that's seven to 11:00 AM. That, you know, if it's, if it's the case that we're not filling up all those times, I, I guess we've, we've talked a little bit with, with Tom and Michelle about, about adjusting that, but that is perfectly, I think, I think it, it, it'll strike a balance of being able to capture and provide a good service to the town and then helping get other folks that need to be tested, tested as well.
So let me just stay on, stay on that point. Michelle? Is it residents or residents and employees of the, of the town?
It'll be residents and employees of the towns.
Okay. And then how will persons who are tested, how do they get the results? And what's the expected timing on them to receive the results?
So with, with the PCR tests, it'll take a little bit longer, obviously, than the antigen tests, which are same day. They, they, they might be two days. The they'll get the results by getting an email. I, I, I can double check on this. I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I think they may have to log in after getting that email, but, but they'll basically click a link and get their result digitally.
Great. And when people show up to get a, a test, what documentation will they need to bring? And what else do they need to bring? For example, do they need to be masked?
They will, they will need to be masked. They'll be unmasked for the swab, of course, but people will come in their cars and someone will approach their vehicle, ask them to roll down their window and they confirm, confirm who they are. It's a good question as to whether or not they need to have an ID. I think they, think they will, but I'm not 100% sure.
Will they need an insurance card?
The, there should be, if, if they've filled it in online, I, I don't think they'll, they'll need that because there'll be an intake form.
Right.
But, yeah.
And let me see if there's anything else I want to cover right now. Michelle, if you just, what are the days of the week again that will be, the clinic would be offered?
It'll be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and Saturdays from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we'll get messaging out starting tomorrow with all of this information.
Right. And, and the link would be on the town website for, for people to do reservation.
Yes, that may not be ready tomorrow, but once it is, we will pu- publish that as well.
And, and, and I just want to be clear about this. If people do not make a reservation, can they just still show up?
Right. As of right now, we're, we're, we're not going to allow walk-ins. There's, there's, as everybody probably knows, but I'm guessing will be covered in the COVID-19 update. There's a very significant surge. There's a lot of people that want tests all the time. The site has constraints with respect to how many people can show up at once. And so the town's made it very clear and we agree that it makes a lot of sense to, to, to just have scheduled appointments only for now. And if it's possible to expand it later, you know, that, that could be an option, but, but not right now.
Great. Just to underscore that point, Joe, we will be actively turning people away if they can't show a proof of appointment.
Well, the proof of appointment, as I understand, there'll be a list. So their name needs to be on the list or not. Liz, any questions?
Just a quick question first. Thank you for pulling this together so quickly. It's, it's a need that's come up by many community members. So we're, we're thrilled to be able to, to be able to offer this. I know it's taken a lot of hard work though, especially over the holidays to pull this off. So thank you. Just a question.
Both sides.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Just a question about the PCR test and the timing. I think you said it was a two-day turnaround. So are, are those tests sent out to a lab?
That's correct. So those, those tests will be sent out to a lab where they'll be processed and returned. Whereas for the antigen tests onsite, they'll be swabbed and, and there's, there's essentially the ability to recognize the, the, the protein of, of the virus much more quickly than, than there is the ability to, to, to measure the, the genetic material. So it could be done at, at 335 Lincoln.
Okay. So for the, if you do the rapid antigen test, you would, for example, stay in your car for 15 minutes and wait for the result?
Yep, it takes, takes, it, it, it takes even a little bit longer than the PCR. With the PCR, you get swapped and you With the PCR, you get swapped and you immediately leave. Whereas with the antigen, you get swabbed and then you wait fifteen minutes to get your result.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Just just to clarify, so will people be staying at the site to wait for the result? Or will they, will the result be delivered by emailed as the other results are delivered?
I believe for the antigen test, they'll stay onsite for the result to be delivered. That 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 service would be out of pocket cost as opposed to the PCR, which is covered by insurance, which we think most people will use.
Yep, okay. Bill, questions?
Questions. First of all, Michelle, I know you did a lot of great work on this last week, so thank you. I know you ran point. Did a great, great job pulling everything together. Jackson, great to see you again. Welcome back. We're very happy to see you and happy to have you back back running this for us. You did a great job last winter and hopefully this goes as well as the last clinic did. So great to have you back. As Liz said, our residents are very, very much looking forward to this. So it'd be great if we can get this up and running as early as next week as as you said. So and just to confirm, and I'm sorry I missed it, I was writing some things down. Residents of the town are going to have priority in the mornings. I think you said seven to eleven. Is it every day, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday?
That that they'll have priority on each of those dates, yeah.
Each of those days, and it's going to be seven to eleven?
Seven to eleven for the residents only and then.
Employees, yeah.
And and employees, sorry, I'm I'm forgetting. But then but then the rest of the period. Those, the the residents and employees can still book in the afternoon, but just also others can book in the afternoon.
Okay, and in terms of the different tests, you said it's going to be offered, which is great to want to offer more than the one test. The the person coming out to the car or the vehicle will be able to administer both tests. We're not going to have multiple lines for different tests, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, this the they'll be the same procedure and and set up in line for all the tests.
All right, and. How how would the test be in? Would they be spaced ten minutes apart, five minutes apart?
Yeah, that's that's a good question. So I mean, they're all good questions, but that's that's an interesting question, I guess I'd say. Because the the will titrate the spacing between the tests at first a little bit longer. So as to accommodate for the fact that that the facility has sort of a limitation in terms of how long of a line it can accommodate. And then maybe titrate that time a little bit closer so that we can squeeze more appointments in when we're sure that we can facilitate it. So.
And then, and my last question for you is, every time I put on the news. And they talk about the the need for for testing and what's going on in the state and even nationally. I'm seeing these clinics and these testing clinics with miles and miles of cars waiting to be tested. Is the difference between what we're going to do and what I'm seeing is that we're doing it by appointment only and that's first come, first served?
That's what we're going to do. You know, there there's something we can't control for, which is the huge amount. Of of virus in the community. And so it's certainly possible that with the the very large number of people getting infected, that there'll be a very high demand and people will find their way. We're taking some measures to with the town to to ensure that it's not that long of a line. One of which is 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 that we're going to, the core of which is that we're only accepting appointments, not walk-ins. And people will be turned away at the site if they have, if if they're walking in attempting to get in the test without an appointment and that they have proof of. And that'll be sort of advertised throughout the different channels that the testing site is advertised, is my understanding. And so hopefully, hopefully that makes sense of that. It's it's not the same sort of situation. Where there's there's, you know, an enormous line that the shipyard can't accommodate.
It's on, it's on, I mean, obviously, Sergeant Kilroy and and the chief have greater expertise than I. But this site seems even to have. Better logistics for queuing vehicles than the Whiting Street site. Because you have a giant parking lot adjacent to it. So hopefully, you know, it's a safer site to do something like this on. And I know that the demand is obviously more significant now, you know, was when you did the last one. But anyway, wishing you success and appreciate you stepping up again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and just to be clear, for that location, there are two entrances. There is an entrance off of directly off of three A. And then there's the entrance that's near the the Fresh Market that's within the shipyard. And the entrance directly off of three A will not be accessible. And there'll be no access to the site there. You need to be actually pulling into the shipyard to to get the site, to 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 get tested.
Yeah, that will be blocked off. That entrance will be blocked off and there'll be plenty of signage directing people around back into the back way.
And just one final question for for Jackson. Where are you in terms of making sure you you've gotten all your your qualifications to do business here in the in the state?
So we we've submitted, you know, as mentioned, we've got Nancy Mobile Med, which we formed to bring in. Someone impeachment who was the Chief Operating Officer of Brody Medical School in North Carolina administered a lot of CARES Act funding there in their COVID response. We, so we 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 registered that in October. We submitted an application last week to do to do business Massachusetts. It it was, it was rejected for a clerical reason on that day. And then and then we've resubmitted it. We expected it. We expect it to be back tomorrow in the database.
Great, thank you. Tom, anything else you want to add before I open this up to for public questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Any member of the public have questions for Mr. Stone or for the town on this? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
Happy to make the motion. Let me just hold up. I'd make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute a license agreement with Mobile Med LLC. For temporary COVID nineteen testing site at three thirty five Lincoln Street, Hingham, Mass. In the form attached here too, subject to the registration of Mobile Med LLC. With the Massachusetts Secretary of State under Mass General Law, Chapter one fifty six C, Section forty eight.
Second.
All call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. It is approved and Jackson, we really look forward to working with you again. And thanks, thank you for your efforts in supporting the town.
We look forward to it too, and and thanks for your support as well.
Thank you.
Now we can release Sergeant Kilroy from the interrogation room.
That's right. I was wondering, it was really dark in there. I had a, I thought that Deputy Levinson was like holding him hostage or something. So we'll move from there to the COVID nineteen update.
Great, cue Joe. I get the right version of. Okay, so COVID update for a January fourth, twenty twenty two. So across Massachusetts, according to the Department of Public Health, we are seeing a large surge in COVID and new COVID nineteen cases. The seven day average of new cases across the state is now eleven thousand eight hundred. Compared to a seven day average of about four thousand four hundred new cases one month ago. Again, that's eleven thousand eight hundred up from four thousand four hundred. Hingham is also experiencing a significant spike. The DPH is reporting two hundred and thirty four new COVID nineteen cases in Hingham during the fourteen day period. Reported on December thirtieth, twenty one. Regard compared to one hundred and sixty seven cases over the two week period reported two weeks ago. That's two hundred and thirty four up from one sixty seven. I will also, I think it's important to note that many residents are now taking at home, taking at home based testing. Which is most often not reported and therefore not in these statistics. As a result, we're assuming that a large and the actual number of positive cases is much higher than these statistics show. The overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now eighty one percent for fully vaccinated individuals. If you look at only vaccine eligible individuals in Hingham, people ages five and over. The percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is eighty six percent. According to the DPH, about fifty three percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven are fully vaccinated at this point. Regarding vaccinations, the town held a successful vaccine booster clinic on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. At the South Shore Baptist Church. This was led by a team from our health, fire and police departments. And the clinic was able to provide a hundred and twenty Moderna booster shots to eligible residents. On Thursday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty two, so next Thursday. Hingham will partner with Cohasset, Hull and Situate to host a second booster clinic at the South Shore Baptist Church from nine AM to one PM. The regional clinic will be available to residents of Cohasset, Hingham, Hull and Situate only. The clinic will provide three hundred doses of the Moderna booster to residents age eighteen and over. Those who received their second dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine more than six months ago are able to receive a booster. This will be a drive up clinic. Those receiving a booster will not need to exit their vehicles in order to receive their shot. Members of the of the Hingham Fire Department and Cohasset Health Department will be administering the doses. Those wishing to receive the vaccine at this clinic mu- must pre-register for the vaccine booster clinic. And that pre-registration will be will be made available on our website. No walk-ins will be accepted at this clinic. So booster shots are also available at the Hingham Center Pharmacy and local CVS and Walgreens locations. Regarding testing, as we announced this evening, the town is partnering with Mobile Med LLC and COVID Clinic Inc. Who opened a temporary COVID nineteen, a testing site at three thirty five Lincoln Street in Hingham. Testing site will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays from seven AM to four PM. Priority access will be given to residents and employees of the town of Hingham, Cohasset, Hull and Situate. We are partnering with those communities to offer this as a regional testing resource. Testing options at the site include PCR tests, rapid antigen tests, antibody tests and other options. The testing site will be operated as a drive through facility and testing will be offered by appointment only. I want to stress that walk-ins will not be accepted at this site. Anyone who does not have an appointment for that day will be turned away. We will have staff, testing staff and detail officers onsite to enforce this rule and keep traffic moving. We are aiming to open the testing center mid next week. More details will be posted on our website shortly, so please monitor our website for all for any details on the testing, on the testing program. Regarding public health protocols, the Department of Public Health recently updated its quarantine and isolation guidelines. To align to align with revised guidance from the CDC. As of now, if you test positive for COVID nineteen, you must self-isolate for five days. You may resume public activities after day five, as long as it has been twenty four hours without a fever. Without taking fever reducing medications like Tylenol and have experienced improvement in other symptoms. Guidance for those contacts has also been updated. If you've received a booster shot or completed the primary series of Moderna or Pfizer. Within six months or Johnson and Johnson within two months, you are now considered fully vaccinated. As such, fully vaccinated individuals who are identified as close contacts do not need to quarantine unless they have symptoms. Fully vaccinated individuals who are close contacts should wear a mask around others for ten days and test on day five if possible. As always, if you develop symptoms, get a test and stay home. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated and are identified as a close contact. Need to quarantine at home for five days. If they cannot quarantine, they need to wear a mask for ten days. Testing on day five is recommended if possible. Again, if you develop symptoms, get a test and stay home. Please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. As we all know well by now, public health protocols to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen include vaccination. Wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing and frequently washing hands, among other measures. As a reminder, effective December twenty first, two thousand twenty one. The Department of Public Health advised all residents, regardless of vaccination status. To wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home. Masks continue to be required in Massachusetts on public dis- on on public and private transportation. In healthcare facilities and in congregate care facilities. Our mask policy remains unchanged and in effect for municipal facilities. We are working with the Health Department to review the latest guidance and and data and determine whether broader community measures may be recommended. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Tom. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Tom. I know the last vaccination clinic was a big success, so thank you to everyone that pulled that off. Do we have any idea what the demand was? Were people turned away? Was there a waitlist?
We had, we had online registration, so I I don't know if people tried to register and weren't able to. I can tell you that our hundred and twenty slots filled up in about two days.
Okay.
It it was over registered, so people were turned away.
Okay. Okay, so is that something we can track for the next one? I mean, if if people are, Hingham residents are being turned away with the three hundred shots among the towns? That we would consider holding another clinic?
Absolutely. I think we could, we could both if they're turned away and if we fill those three hundred appointments, you know. In a very short period, and even if we fill them in general, we might very well want to hold another clinic period.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. And by the way, just a a great, big thank you to the South Shore Baptist Church on this. As as they have been throughout this entire pandemic, they're amazing partners and they have a great facility, so. Sorry, Bill.
Questions, Bill?
No, no question. Thank.
And Tom, thank you for for staying on top of this. I know you're coordinating. With Shell, Michelle and Art and Susan Sarny. So and and you've got your command team, so it's it's a group effort and you are truly the leader in making this happen. So so thank you.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Any members of the public with questions for Mr. Mayo? Seeing none. I don't believe we are going to move to appointments this evening. So I'm going to ask if there are public, members of the public who have comments or questions about items not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll move to town administrator, select board reports, starting with Mr. Mayo.
Sure. I did have a report. What do they want to tell you all? Oh, just that. Oh, gosh, now I don't remember what it was.
We will move to Michelle and then we'll.
I wrote it down. Yeah, go ahead. I gotta get my notebook.
And anything that you wanted to add?
I have one report tonight. I just wanted to provide the board a quick update on CARES funding. So CARES was one of the first federal pots of money that was available to municipalities to help us get through the pandemic. That was for unbudgeted expenses. We did this all through Plymouth County here. And I just want to thank Sue Nickerson for doing the lion's share of submitting all of our reimbursements, as well as John Ferris and Karen Toomey. Over at the school department and Heidi in our office. We submitted reimbursements for the full three point seven million dollars and then a little bit more. Of the allocation that Plymouth County gave to Hingham, so we we made good use of all of those funds. We've received two point eight million of that three point seven million to date, and we've got three submissions outstanding. But we are submitting right up until the very end of calendar year twenty twenty one, when all that funding expired. And so now we will move on to focus on the other sources of federal funds. That's it.
Great, thank you. Arthur?
Yes, thank you, Joe. I guess the only additional item I'd like to highlight is that. We've recently been notified by the Massachusetts Office on Disability. That we've been awarded a forty five thousand dollar grant to enable Hingham to complete. An ADA self-assessment and transition plan. We finalize that eligibility electronically with the MOD today. I'll be working with Emily Muntworth to finalize a scope that'll allow us to. Secure those two deliverables by the end of June. We have this fiscal year to put those funds to work. And going forward, we'll certainly be in close contact with the Commission on Disability.
Great, thank you. Tom, back to you. Are you got anything?
That's all right. I I can, it's not a. That's all right, I I can, it's not important, we can talk about it next week.
Okay. Liz?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Bill?
The only thing I have to report is the naming bylaw committee met tonight and. As the liaison to to that committee and to the field study project, we've asked them to look at the naming bylaw. And to consider potential changes to the bylaw specifically in the area of of. Of athletic fields and facilities and other. Other areas of the town too, so they met tonight and wanted to extend my appreciation to the committee for for listening to residents. Throughout the town, I'm not sure how the meeting went, obviously, because we were here, but. Anyway, if if residents have some comments or or concerns, they should forward them to our office and. I can make sure that it gets forwarded to the the chair of the committee. With any and any any comments or input into what the work they're doing, so thank you.
Great. And I just note that our next meeting will be next Thursday, not next Tuesday, so it's going to be Thursday, the thirteenth. And with that. I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, hi. We are adjourned, thank you all for your diligence, patience and efforts on behalf of the town, thank you.